The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Theater at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Special meeting of the White Pine County Commission, February 23rd, 2021.
Good afternoon and welcome to the special county commission meeting on this Tuesday, February 23rd. If you all please stand and join us to the front. I'm Cory Rogers.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as is normal, take this first moment for silent meditation, prayer, whatever Okay, we'll enter into the meeting, and the first item on the agenda is that public comment. I've got a few letters here that we received, so we'll read those into the record. That's correct. Okay, so the first letter that we have to get is addressed to the board of county commissioners. We've all listed, and it's in reference to non-supporting the Leeson County Own Water Act. Dear Board of County Commissioners, I am opposed to leasing county-owned water rights, Article 77728 and 72729, White Pine Water Power LLC. Water is the most essential asset of our community, and proper study of the documentation has not been provided. I am certain that you have noticed that we are in a drought. How will the drawdown affect wells in the Septo Valley Duck Creek and Yo Town water? Why should taxpayers foot the cost for additional pumping, assuming that more water is available, when their water wells are drawn down? Who will pay for additional pumping when the wells need to be drilled deep? Additionally, the price of $100 per acre foot is dramatically underrated. A family member recently sold water rights for $2,500 an acre foot in Septo Valley. Please do not lease the water rights without proper study and pricing. It's signed, Paula Carson, Appeal Box 150936. Second letter is, I, Delance School--
Mr. Chairman, you need to speak up. There's a heater with a blower behind here. We're having trouble hearing you, so speak up, please.
I'm doing the best I can, George. Everybody, can everybody hear me? No problems? All right, I'll try my best.
He's got a heater right next to him.
Commissioner, if I can--
Go ahead.
If I could be heard, we don't actually have to read the public comment into the record. We have to make it part of the record when it's submitted, so this is kind of a courtesy. I mean, what we could do is just make copies for the public and the commission, but, you know, honestly, reading into the record is unnecessary.
Thank you very much. So that is your answer for you. There will be copies of it, although if you'd like to read each and every one, that will certainly take effect. This other one is from Frederick. That again will be part of the public record, and as the DA explained, you can pick up a copy, we'll make copies for you.
Copies are available by the door.
They are available. There are copies available. Good, thank you. Thanks, Jake. All right. Anybody on the phone with public comment? We're sending public comments from the public right now, and we'll start with those of you on the phone that would like to speak. Is there anybody out there on the phone? Can you see anybody, Jennifer? Seeing none right now, we'll go to the public. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak? Please come forward if you'd like to speak out there. This is public comment. Anybody? Okay, George, come on with it. Somebody on the phone, everybody?
This Bill Wilson.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
All right, all right, all right. Water committee meeting last night on Zoom, they showed a picture of where the, their lower pond was on the beach, and it looked to me like it was stacked on top of the railroad tracks. Is that-- Have you talked to the railroad about conflicts of the train in that water project?
I believe they have had several conversations with the railroad, but that will be addressed. I allow them to speak first, and they address some of these questions that have brought forward. So that's the first question I'll have them answer is, have you been in touch with the matinee of the railway?
All right, we're tying in with the water. It needs to-- If that's your point of view of the water, then I think that needs to be resolved before they actually go out for a purpose.
Okay, I've got that written down. We'll have them address that as one of your questions. Do you have anything else you'd like to address right now, Bill, that they can answer on his speech?
My, uh, I just made comments for a few days ago, and I think those will pay off.
Okay. Anyone else on the phone? Anybody? Okay, audience, again, George, please come forward. It looks like you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I procure a February 10th, 2021, we brought up the resolution of 2021-11, which we've seen water rights as that often in the public, and less than fair market value. The resolution, the last one, has had in one state the project commence in approximately 2024 and 2025, they would require thousands of people to complete. Again, how many thousands and what time period? At your last meeting, prior to that, I asked if the project was going to build houses or apartments. You didn't get to provide me an answer. This is almost a month now. Also at that meeting, Mr. Chairman, you were to consider selling some of the water rights for less than the fair market value. Again, do not sell the water rights. Lease it for a small fee, or let them use it for a small royalty fee based on their income. Do not sell those water rights. They're the county's future and economic growth in the future. If you look what's happening elsewhere in the country, you can see what the value of water is. If you don't know what the value of it is, I want to tell you, you need to take the time and do some studying. Mr. Chairman, White Pine Power Project was on the agenda for the regional planning commission meeting held on February 17th, 2021. However, no one showed up. No one showed up to answer any questions. Next signals are being sent out, and we need to see a clear path as to what is being proposed and how it's to be implemented. I'm for the project, but we need these answers coming forth. We're not getting them. We've got to stop the next signals. Mr. Chairman, there is talk that the railroad track right away in the proposed area of the project may have to be moved and relocated. The track presently is on patented ground. Now, I want to know, will it be put on patented land when the proposed move takes place? If not, that needs to be addressed. We need to ensure that the right of way cannot be terminated down the road. Patent land is a good guarantee. Unpatent land is not, and that's very important. Mr. Chairman, on the proposed purchase agreement, page 9, item 13-8, states that the White Pine Water Project shall have the right to assign, convey, mortgage, encumber, or transfer assignment without prior written consent of the county. All of its rights, benefits, privileges, interests, or obligations. You're going to send out next signals. If you do that, I want to remind you, this county, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars finding Southern Hillside Old Water, and here you are, selling the water rights and allowing the assignment. That's got to be addressed. That's all I have at this time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone else in the audience got a, any public comment on the issue? Anybody on the phone? Seeing none, hearing none, please come forward, state your name.
I'm Bobby Clint Hidaway. I've been, my family's been farming ranch in this area for a long time. What I understand is that, I find it very interesting, everybody here has some water in front of them. I think that's interesting. And we're talking about water. We're talking about what we're going to do with that going forward. Every time I hear, "We're going to come in and use it, we only want it for a little bit," I think, we already shut down SNWA, we already had this fight once. Oh, but it's not there as much. It's almost like letting a thief in the front door. I get a little bit concerned. I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, I just, I don't understand the whole thing all the way through, but I know that it is a finite resource, and I know that we don't have enough of it. We're already starting to see that we drop wells just by pumping a little bit of irrigation water we have. And so going forward, I'd like to continue farming. I don't know what this is going to have, as far as the impact on that. I also know, I'm pretty sure, on the other side of Duck Creek, where that federal reservoir is going to be, is pretty good sage hens, habitat. If you're a rancher or farmer, they're going to say, they've been using sage hens or sage gals to beat us over the head for the last 30 years, trying to get cattle kicked off the range, trying to do this, all the named sage gals. So if you might look into that before you even go, because that's a pretty good hurdle you're going to have to cross. I think that's all I have for the time being, so. Oh, I'd also like, I don't know where to find the information on the meetings, but first through this Friday, then it was Tuesday, this is the Olive Park, or wherever, but Slimpool, and then here, so I'm sorry I was late, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience around the phone? Please come forward, state your name.
Through the record, my name is Gold Budz. I'm starting, it's not like a full record, I guess. But a couple of things that we had at the other meeting, everybody was kind of talking, putting, the state engineer may come and take our water. If they wanted it, several years back, they came and took the Pupnally water. No problem, and said, "That's good, keep this." We did, and I don't think that they would take it. I think that's a gamble, but I think that they, if they had wanted it, they'd have took it then. And they had the same situation in Split Valley, just the way we are now, that they left it, just the way it is with White Pine keeping the water. Had several conversations with the state engineer over there at Central Hillside Old Water during the meetings, and he never seemed to be excited about White Pine using this for economic value. You know, I think that, I'm not against this project, that's the first thing, but I don't think we can sell the water rights. I mean, we can sell it to them by the acre foot, the cup full, I don't care, but the county could guarantee that they'd have the water, if everything new, everything that they said they wanted to do. But after all the years that we fought trying to keep this water from Las Vegas, I think we better keep it here, because the state engineer says, we're about doing a little over half a recovery from what we should be, with 70,000 US yeses recovered, and we got like $140,000, $140,000 acre feet of water debt that's already gotten permits. So I think we better get everything lined up, because, you know, 100 years from now, like the state wants to put in a water plant, I can't see how that could ever happen, but that's what they want. And you guys are going to start doing this this year, according to legislature, last year. So I think that maybe we should keep it, all the water, go ahead, I'd say go ahead to some, but I think you better take a long, hard look. I've seen some guys before, when Vegas wanted to buy the water, and they were going to make a trade and everything, and they haven't actually come, and I've never heard before anymore. So if you take the pulse out there in town, and I think you better slow this up a little bit, and let people find out what's going on. You're going to come up here, one of these meetings, and we have lots of door chickens out there, so it can be a good thing. You better be careful, I think that we want to keep what we got. Thank you.
Any other public comment? And based on Mr. Budz's last couple of comments there, I don't think, I'm concerned anybody else is going to tar and feather. We're doing what we feel is best for White Pine County this year.
Can't hear you, Richard.
Well, I'm doing the best I can.
Well, you better get up front and holler, because nobody can hear you.
All right, I'll stand up. After listening to Mr. Budz's last comments, I don't really appreciate it, because I'm not going to be threatened by anybody. This commission is going to do what it thinks is best in the best interest of White Pine County. Public comment is always welcome, threats are not, to tell us about being tarred and feathered or whatever, and putting that type of pressure on this commission or any other body of government is not going to, I'm not going to stand for it. So I welcome all your comments. I do not welcome a threat. We are doing what we think is best for White Pine County. We're here at this meeting today to get all the input we can. We're allowing the public to speak. We are going to allow the members of the White Pine Water Power Project to speak and to explain a lot of the incidents that are going to be coming up, and the process that it takes. We are looking at what is in the best interest of White Pine County. So we're going to go on with this meeting as described, but we're going to keep it civil, we're going to keep it right. We're not going to accept a threat from anybody. We're going to do the best we can. So we're going to sit, this first part of this meeting, I'll read the opening statement, but that's my comment, and I'm going to speak for the commission. We are not going to accept any kind of threats. So if you tell me you're going to tar and feather me, or do whatever you want to do, bring it on, because it ain't going to happen. So that being said, public comment is over. We are going to open the public meeting, it's on page two. Item one is a public hearing, and this is for discussion only. The White Pine County Board of Commissioners will take public comment regarding the matter of the fair market value of county-owned water rights. Water permits number 72728 and 72729 during its regular meeting held on Wednesday, February 10th, 2021, and appraisal of the water value of $100 per acre foot of county-owned water rights from the water permits number 72728 and 72729 has been conducted and is available for review on the White Pine County website. So that being said, and as we open this meeting, I'm going to ask the members of the-- Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Travis.
My likely disclosure here, Jennifer, if you could, I'm going to take my mask off so you can hear me. Okay. Jennifer, you could please pull up that other link. I don't know why I reset, but if you could zoom in to the project area, the substation north of Ely.
So we're in this area?
I think you're right about here.
Right here, Septo Creek?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, probably. Do it quick. I don't know why I reset, I had it all. If you go--
Right in here?
Yeah, I'll just come over, if you don't mind, and just--
Yeah.
Oh, mercy! Okay, so if anyone wants to look at the packet, page 13 and page five, you'll see that all the infrastructure is up here in the box 17. Here's the substation north. See the railroad track? It all lines up. This, right here, this box, is my parents' property. As you will see, it is not adjacent to, it is not connected, it is not in any of their plans. There is no financial interest, there is no here, there, it's completely vacant. I don't know how clear, but it, here's the transmission corridor up here, still parcel in between from one of my parents' home. So there is nothing here. If you want to keep perpetuated the room, go ahead, but you're great news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, like I was saying, we're, right now, we're going to allow--
James has some.
James has some.
Sorry, if you were going to make a preparatory statement, I just wanted to also just make a preparatory statement about what kind of hearing this is.
Okay.
So basically, a lot of times, we'll have a public hearing that'll be connected to agenda items, and as you all know, we can take items together, so you guys can do the public hearing and deliberate at the same time. We don't really need to worry about separating discussion deliberations. Today, however, we only have a public hearing, we don't have agenda items on this agenda, so I would just ask the commission, you can discuss, ask questions, obviously, the presenters can present, the public can speak, but we shouldn't be deliberating towards, for, or against any future action at this meeting today. I just want to remind everybody.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, again, I read what the hearing is all about today, and we've listed some public comment, which is welcome, and now I'd like to turn over to the presenters, which would be the Water Power Project, to give us an insight on what they're doing, and maybe answer some of these questions. We have one about how many employees, we have another one about the railroad, and so on, and I think it can be better served with you guys presenting to us what your plan is, and then after that, if there's any questions, we can maybe direct them to the engineer, or to the attorney, or to them. And they know the answers, and they know what they're up to. This commission is simply putting on this public hearing, like James said, we're not going to deliberate or anything, but I think it's only fair, and that's why this meeting is held, so you can hear from the project, and we can gather some real correct information instead of misleading stuff. And if you guys would please, does it need somebody to start with, however you want to start? Is that okay, James?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we could introduce ourselves, and then we can do your presentation if that's--
Because, can you, when you're speaking, like I have to, they can't hear you in the back, would you please stand up and maybe address them, or maybe go to the podium, whatever you'd like to do, to try to let the people in the back of the audience hear you better?
Sure. Okay. So I'm Matthew Shapiro, CEO of R Plus Hydro and Gridflex Energy, and 10 years ago, was the first time I came here to propose this project, start talking about it, under the name of Gridflex Energy, so sometimes you may see those two names. And a couple of years ago, we joined forces with R Plus Energies, Luigi will talk about R Plus Energy, so the name R Plus Hydro is now the name of the developer, and White Pine Water Power LLC is a specific company that this project was attached to. So that is myself. We have Luigi, you want to introduce yourself?
Yep. Luigi Resta, President of R Plus Energies, the parent company of R Plus Hydro, as Matthew just described. We are backed by a family office, second generation out of Intermountain West, Salt Lake City. They do commercial real estate development, they're very invested in the community, they have offices in Henderson, Nevada, and Boise, Idaho, as well. Forty-year-old company, and really, part of what we do as developers in renewable and real estate is make sure that we have consensus and community buy-in for projects, because they're long-term investments in the community. We do utility-scale renewable energy development as R Plus, that's large-scale solar, solar plus battery, wind, and pump storage hydro, which this project is. The intention for this meeting is really to be totally transparent. Matthew's prepared a very nice presentation of the whole project, and it will take a little time to go through this, but I think this describes the project as a whole, from a holistic perspective, and may answer some questions. Some of the specific questions, we'll need to go into a little more detail, but probably what we should do is talk about the project, put it on record, and then we can answer specific questions if people are okay with that. We also have here with us Gage Lurbel, who's our water rights attorney in specialty, maybe a quick introduction.
My name's Gage Zurbel, and I'm an attorney with Dorsey &amp; Whitney, based in Salt Lake City. I'm a natural resource and energy attorney. By way of background, I'm familiar with your county. When Ken Ross Gold bought out Barrick's interest in Bald Mountain, I worked at Crowley Fleck in Montana, I did the water rights, and I transferred them into Ken Ross Gold. I did their same work in Tonopah, Nevada. I do extensive work throughout the state, mainly over in the western part of the state, where I'm also working on new copper mines. I work for Nevada Gold, I work for Barrick, I work for Rio Tinto, so I do a lot of No Adder Water Rights. I also work with Energy Powers, so that's my background generally, usually with mining, but in this case, I'm working with the energy companies. Have about seven years of experience, and based out in Salt Lake City, licensed here in Nevada, as well, throughout the Intermountain West, Montana, Colorado, Idaho, and Utah.
Arnie, do you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, I've got my mask hooked up. You know, that is-- I'm Arnie Luther. I'm a principal hydrogeologist with PTO Associates. PTO Associates is a consulting firm that supports the mining industry, and we work primarily with developing water resources or removing water from a mining environment. And we've worked here, I think, for 20-plus years with the copper mine and various owners of the Robinson Resource in prior years. My clients are generally northern Nevada, so I serve people like Nevada Gold Mines and Marigold, and we help them develop solutions to groundwater-related problems. I've been doing this work for roughly, geez, I want to age myself, I think nearly 30 years. I started out with Amex Gold in Winemucca, Nevada, and I worked almost exclusively in Nevada for that period of time. There've been a few jobs when I've worked in other countries or other areas of the western U.S., but, no, that's us.
I'm BJ Almberg, I'm a basic engineer here in Ely. I think all of you probably know who I am. I've come on board to try to assist them with some of these water right change applications to benefit this project and continue on, and as a part of doing some of that work, we've been able to pull together, Arnie, and some of the team that will come back in and complete the studies that are required for the state engineer actually to be able to act on these applications, if the county so allows us to proceed. That will come back in, and the state engineer will only basically approve these changes if, with all the studies that our experts put together, comes in and deems that it would not be detrimental to the valley or the water use of the valleys, so hopefully we can do well with that.
Thank you, thank you, BJ. Do you have the presentation now?
Yeah, we do the screenshot real fast.
So while we're waiting-- So while we're waiting, again, this might be redundant to some of you folks who have seen this already, but we really wanted to go on record and establish a baseline for the work.